All right, well, why don't we get started? I will, this is Cameron Perez Verdia. I will call this meeting of the Assembly Public Safety Committee meeting to order. It is 11:00 a.m. on December 2nd. And why don't we start with a roll call?
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Perez Verdia?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Constant? Mr. Dunbar? Ms. Zalatell? Mr. Rivera? Mr. Whedleton? Ms. Allard? I do see Ms. Allard on.
I just wanted to let you know, people are trying to leave the Health Committee meeting, and then they're going to be coming over to this meeting.
And then Ms. LaFrance?
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks. And yeah, as, as folks come over from the other meeting, we'll just, I'll just make sure to announce them as we, as we see them enter the meeting. Welcome, everyone. I wanted to just, before we got started, there is a one change to the agenda. Under new business, we were planning on having a report from the U.S. Department of Justice, a briefing on new positions regarding murdered and missing Indigenous women. Ms. Kennedy, did you want to speak to that in terms of what our plans are to reschedule that?
Well, we're working on it. We'll just have to see what, what we can plan. But yeah, for now, it was just something of interest, so just see if we can schedule it next month or maybe in February. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll strike that from the, the agenda. And I see a number of folks joining the meeting at this point. And, um, great. Great, okay. All right, well, let's get, get started. First, on our agenda, our Anchorage Police Department regular updates. Chief, Chief Dahl, are you going to, to do that update?
Sure. Be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that. So, uh, you know, I don't have a whole lot to update since the last time that we all met. I don't, we're not going to be updating crime stats or anything this time, but recently, I was having a conversation with Ms. Kennedy and mentioned our cold case unit, which I think she was unaware of, and so she said that she would be interested in hearing a little bit about what that looks like at the next meeting. So I was just going to give a brief overview of that. About a year ago or so, maybe a little longer, we were looking at the way the department's organized and the deployment of the new resources that we've been given over the last couple of years. And this is something we've talked about a lot, whereas we've added new officers, we've looked at, you know, how we're deploying them, how the department structured those kinds of things. And I, I was aware of what our cold caseload looked like from my time as the lieutenant in charge of homicide and robbery assault units. And I'm also aware of the, of the way that those cases were assigned. And so, we were talking about it and essentially took the opportunity to assign two detectives full-time to reviewing APD's cold case homicides. And we have about 60 or 65, I think, in that status, 60 cases going back three or, in four decades in some cases. And so, I just felt that it would be important, especially given the changes in technology we've seen in the last five years or so, to, to have somebody actively reviewing those cases and working on them. And, you know, we are fortunate to be in a position where we had enough staff to do that, and so, we designated two detectives, and, and they're off and running. Those detectives are also reviewing all of APD's sex assault kits that have been submitted for testing. If we get a positive hit on one of those sex assault kits, those detectives will be looking at that. Typically, those cases are fairly old also, even though there can be substantial differences between homicides and sex assaults. A case that's old, that needs to be, sort of have the investigation restarted again, those, there are a lot of similarities, and so it makes sense to have them doing those. So, so far, the two detectives have been at it for about a year or so. We don't have any announcements to make on the status of any of those cases, but I'm very pleased that they're working on them. I know they're working really hard, they're covering a lot of ground, and I hope that at some point, we do have an announcement that they've made progress on a case that has been cold for a while. So, it's just kind of a quick overview of what that looks like. Those detectives are also working with the Department of Justice's Missing Murdered Indigenous Persons Program. The sergeant in charge of the homicide unit has been a part of that working group along with the detective captain, so we think that's very productive. And I, I look forward to having the representative from DOJ come and give a briefing, because I think Assembly members will be pleased with the work that's being done that APD is a partner in.
Great. And I, I just wanted to take a moment to say that Member LaFrance, Dunbar, Constant, and Zalatell have all joined us, and I do have a question for you from Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chief, you already partially answered this, but just to put a little more final point on it, about the issue of missing and murdered Indigenous women, I think there's a, could you give us a little bit on the demographics of the cold cases? Are they known? Do the cold cases tend to have a disproportionate, disproportionate number of Alaska Native and Indigenous people in them?
You know, that's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head. That's certainly something that we can, that we can pull together, but I don't have the demographics of the cases in front of me at the moment.
But you said that the folks that are working on this issue are connected to this cold case effort, and you think that will lead to progress? Is that your, is that what you said, or did I mishear what you were saying?
Well, I think there's a couple different threads in there, but the, the detectives that we assign, assign to the cold cases are, are just working the cold cases that are APD's cases. But, as, that does have an intersection with the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Person Project. They have been part of the working group here in Anchorage that's exploring that issue and looking at, you know, resources and techniques that can be applied there in, in a supporting role, and mostly because some other parts of the state don't have the same level of law enforcement available, and so they're looking at ways to, to make an impact when those cases are new, instead of letting them get to be cold cases. But in addition to the cold case detectives, sort of having a connection there, we are actively partnering with that project. The detective captain is involved and the detective sergeant in, in charge of the homicide unit. So I'm not sure if I answered your question, or if I just made it worse.
No, I think, I think that is a, a good first step, and we look forward to some of the results. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, and I do want to mention also that Member Whedleton has also joined us. Chief, a question for you. In the, the chat, we had, Celeste had, had, had made a specific request for a cold case. If, if somebody from the community or an organization from the community wants you and your department to address or look into a specific case, what does that process look like in terms of them reaching out and advocating for that?
Well, I think that they could, you know, everybody's welcome to reach out to Community Relations and make that connection. I mean, I'm sure everybody is well aware that if there's a case that is, you know, that is still pending like that, a lot of times, there's not much we can say about what the status is, or what the evidence looks like, or anything else like that. Sometimes we will make assistance in a case, whether it's a cold case or a new case. But if, if, like, with Celeste's request, if she wants to reach out to MJ Tim, the Community Relations Director, and ask, you know, we'll look and see if there's anything we can say about it. You know, the, the cold cases typically revolve around, you know, if you have success in a cold case, it's typically because there's been some sort of technological change that allows you to utilize evidence that you collected at the time that you were not able to link to a suspect, and then, as technology evolves, you, you are able to. So I see Celeste's comment in there that she, I know the family reached out, but she'll connect with MJ. So I, Celeste, I think that's a good first step, and we can at least take a look and see if there's anything additional that we can, that we can say about it at this point.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Do any other members have questions for the chief at this, this time? Okay. Looks like we're good. Thanks, thanks, Chief.
Good. Thanks, sir.
Yep. Okay. Let's move on to the Anchorage Fire Department updates. I think this is going to be the, the bulk of our presentation today. Core team expansion and implementation timeline. Who from the, the Fire Department is going to make this presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Mike Riley with Anchorage Fire Department.
Right.
I'll be the lead project coordinator on this. Just kind of a quick background, I was the, the original employee working on the core team, so I'm kind of just going to use that experience I have with building the core team out over the last, it's been almost three years now that we've been operating it, and use that experience, and we're going to apply it towards the mobile crisis team here. So, just a quick background, me and why I'm kind of in this seat at this time. Chief Hetrick asked me to come meet today, just to kind of give a quick overview. I'm not sure if it can be too in-depth. We've had two working meetings. Last week was a short week, a long weekend, and we just, actually just got out of a meeting today, so we've had just two meetings to start talking about this. High-level overview of the program, just getting a good idea of what it is we are doing. I was intimately involved with the proposal, so with Chief Hetrick, but now we're getting everybody else on board. So, it's the Assistant Chiefs, the District Chief, and just finding out what, what is, defining what it is. And so, they kind of just worked on that high-level overview with them, and then started breaking out into work groups, so we just kind of separated the work out to more efficiently start implementing this project. We identified several areas, including equipment, finance, personnel. We're kind of the three high-level ones right now, and so kind of our priority today is programmed, or position descriptions for these new positions. So the clinician, actually going out and doing the crisis care, and the social worker, who's going to be providing the wraparound services, these are positions that don't exist today in the Fire Department. So, and even a little deeper, they, they really don't exist in its essence in the, in the municipality. So it's looking like we're going to have to create new position descriptions to fill these, which is going to take a little bit of time. We're working very diligently on it. We have several people, that that's kind of their priority right now. But that's going to, that's kind of the, the initial first lift, or the first hurdle to get over with this. So we've got the work separated out, working on the position descriptions, and working on identifying all the rest of the infrastructure, so office space, vehicles, equipment, that's all going to kind of happen simultaneously, but we're a little more versed with doing that versus hiring, you know, developing these new positions. So, it's going to be a lot of effort put on that. The goal is to have the position description done at the latest by the end of the month, which is really expedited, considering we're kind of starting from scratch for the meeting. So that's just kind of a quick high-level overview, kind of where we're at within, you know, like I said, it's been just two meetings in a pretty short week, so I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. I have a question, Ms. Zalatell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Riley. There's a little bit of a feedback. There we go. Is this staffing you're looking at right now for a, to bring this on 12-hour response? Is that the initial staffing and the positions you're looking at?
Yeah, so that, more importantly, if it's two or if it's four, it's going to be the same position to staff it. So just getting the position description written and approved is kind of our first hurdle. So, in, initial thoughts are, yes, it's going to be a 12-hour, seven-day-a-week rollout. And I, I'm kind of dubbing it kind of a slow rollout, because this is work that hasn't been done in this community either. So, I fully anticipate what day one and day 60 look like are probably going to be a little bit different as we learn how to respond, one alongside APD, because as you know, a lot of their calls are going to be affected by this. We do that today, but just not in this role. So I think the seven, 12, yes, will be our initial rollout, but when we expand, just having a position description to make it easier to fill those positions.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. Can you, for, for those in this, in this meeting who may be less for, for familiar, can you just take a step back for a moment and, and talk about, you know, briefly, how this is going to change the, the core, core team, how this is going to look differently from what it, it is now, and, and sort of what we can expect to see over the next, you know, few months, first year, et cetera?
Yeah, yeah, happy to do that. So, the core team, basically, right now is a high utilization program, as it is today. So it's staffed by a paramedic and a clinician. The clinician, we have about 20 hours a week, and it's a cooperative with UAA. So we identify individuals using our, our internal data, so we get, we see names popping up frequently, and we have software that, that looks for that and kind of creates reports. And as people start becoming more frequent on this list, we can see the utilization going up, and we go and we outreach them, assess for opportunities to meet their needs, because something's missing when they're interacting with the Fire Department in the emergency room that often. Just some numbers, just that are out there, it's usually 20 or 30 transports or more before we'll go and engage them, and it's not because I don't want to get there sooner, it's because of capacity right now. Our program, we can only manage between six and 10 people, 10 at the max, so about six people, because it's real, the real intensive case management needed, and a lot of attention needed for these individuals. And so the capacity is just real limited, so it's usually 20, 30 transports or more before we're out there. And then, we can't only take on new ones as we kind of resolve other, you know, the client's situation resolves, whether they get housed, connected to health services, or whatever it is, and their, their, their needs are being met, then we can address and, you know, outreach another person. So that's the program today. What it's expanding to is this mobile crisis team. And what the mobile crisis team will be is it will be a response team that responds, I, I think we talked about, within one hour, but basically in real time for individuals experiencing crisis in our community. At a real high level, we're going to be looking at non-violent crisis, so, and again, that's how it's going to look early on in this. So, these would be individuals that, there's not weapons involved, they're not threatening people, but are in a crisis, we will respond with a paramedic and a licensed, or soon-to-be licensed clinician, but I think rollout, the first round of rollout will be licensed clinician and a paramedic running a co-response together in a single resource unit, meeting that individual in the community, and assessing them, and creating a care plan to resolve their crisis. Looking at data around other communities, for those individuals, about 60% of those calls can be resolved in the community and stay in the community, so they're not being transported to the emergency rooms. Today, that is the only resource we have, especially the Fire Department. We have one destination, and I can't, want to speak fore-pleased too much, but I think they also share that similar experience when they do a TOTL 47, they're going straight to the emergency room. Sometimes it doesn't resolve, or sometimes these people are, are leaving same day within hours, just to kind of recycle back in, because they're, they weren't maybe connected to services. So that's where we're going to have the advantage, where we can resolve in real time, create a care plan, and having social workers in this group too, they come back the next day, same day, you know, later, with that plan in hand, and kind of help execute it, so there's that wraparound service. So that, really, the big thing is we're going to be, it's just bringing the right, the right resource to the individual in the community, and attempting to, to help them remain in the community safely. And if not, then a really good handoff will happen from a clinician to a clinician in the emergency room, which I think is a better handoff, when it's peers talking to each other and doing a real soft handoff. So I think the outcomes will be a lot better, but what we'll see is less calls for service, a less repetitive calls for service, and just people getting the right resources at the right time.
Thank you. That, that, that was great. And, and so in terms of timeline, you mentioned getting the position descriptions done by the end of this month. Can you give us sort of some milestones or timeline in terms of when the other key pieces will be finished, and when, when you feel like this is going to be up and running?
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, position descriptions are kind of going to be, the most part right now, by the end of the month, and then, the goal is by end of quarter one, so by the end of March, we would like to have two teams stood up. And so the two teams would be a clinician and a paramedic. At a minimum, have those two teams stood up. It would be ideal to have a social worker as well stood up, but I think at a minimum, we need those two teams. So we're shooting for March 31st as a go-live, you know, maybe April 1, we call it a go-live day. Again, that's going to be flexible based on getting those positions filled even. Again, this is a new position for the community. Clinicians don't typically do de-escalation in the, in the field, so really finding a good match to fill these positions is going to be super important, but we're shooting for beginning of quarter two to be able to go live with at least a 12-hour shift, two teams, a 12-hour. If we're kind of missing that mark, we might even slow roll, and maybe we'll try one team, you know, 40 hours a week. Again, I don't want to get out ahead of myself, but I think those are all options on the table right now. But again, the hard goal is two teams, April 1, and the rest is going to happen kind of simultaneous. Vehicles and equipment should happen just kind of as quick as they can get through the system. Another thing, reporting software is going to be a, something that's probably going to be closer to six to nine months out, just based on a previous experience with, with purchasing software having to go through all the, the appropriate channels and making sure it's approved by RIT. It just takes, can take a little longer. That's not going to stop us from being able to begin this program. We'll be able to do reporting with the systems we have today, and keeping good numbers just using, you know, Excel and just more manual, but the goal is to have something that is more automated, and more specifically for what this kind of work does. And it's not unusual, there are plain programs out there. So that, we're looking probably six to nine months. So, I think the big number is, but getting a team on the street by, by the beginning of quarter two, I think is our main goal.
Great, great. Thank you. Just a, a call for any other questions before we move on to the next item. That was a good overview. I think that, that, that was what we were hoping for. Great. Thanks very much. If I see any more, more and more questions come in, we'll, we'll pull you back, back in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Great. So we're going to move on now to the, the next section, the Law Department Updates. Sarah, you're going to give us an update, and specifically, one of the things you were going to talk about is deferred sentencing agreements, is that correct?
Yes. So, first, a quick update is that trials have now been put off till March by the, by the Chief Justice. So, we have a lot of cases that are piling up, that continue to pile up. Every Monday, we have a set of hearings called pre-trial conferences, which are basically like statics hearings. It's where cases wait before someone decides whether to change their plea or go to trial. And we've had over 500 for each of the last several weeks. So there's a big caseload, and it's going to hit us in March, but we're working hard, we're getting out offers, we're doing all our regular hearings, bail hearings, arraignments, that continues. We're very grateful for access to laptops, which APD made possible after our last meeting, so that is going to be a huge game changer for us. And it will also work nicely in the future. We're moving towards a paperless office, and we will be ceasing to do paper files. So those laptops are also key to, in the future, going to court without paper. So, a lot of good changes coming up, and that's, we are very grateful for the support of this body. Assemblywoman Kennedy asked me to just talk a little more about the brainstorm I had last, last time, when we were talking about possible homelessness, ways to address homelessness issues. This is still.
Actually, I think I have a question for you that may relate to your first up, before you go on to your second part. Mr. Dunbar, would you like to ask a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just really quickly, Ms. Stanley, so, I assume because the majority, if not all, is misdemeanors, that this isn't an issue for you, but I'm curious generally how the delay in trials impacts people who are in pre-trial confinement, who are in jail. That is to say, to what degree, if at all, are people remaining in jail because they can't get to trial?
With, yeah, it's, it affects our cases less than I would assume the felony cases. Yes. So, a couple things have adjusted during the time of COVID that are sort of preventing, I think, any huge miscarriages of justice in terms of people staying in jail. One is that the court system, the presiding judges, adjusted the bail schedule when COVID started, and, and one or two times since then, sort of decreasing monetary amounts that keep people in during COVID. Also, the judges, when they set individual bails for people, have been pretty, a little loosening somewhat, you know, their monetary requirements, so that people can get out earlier, because everyone's recognizing that, yeah, if you don't want to plead out, your case is going to go on until March, and, and it's way past the normal speedy trial time of 120 days. So I think the judges and the court system are trying to mitigate that problem, and I think it's working pretty well. I don't, I haven't heard of, recently, of any egregious cases where, you know, someone's in jail, can't get out, you know, for a trespass or that kind of crime. Usually, the people who are stuck in there are people who are, it's a DV crime usually, and so they have more stringent conditions that they may not be able to meet, such as getting a third-party custodian. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Dunbar.
No, I, I was going to ask about the TPC. That, that makes sense to me. If I could ask a quick follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, of course.
So the flip side of that, you know, you're obviously a prosecutor, and do you feel like that altered bail schedule has conversely led to an increase in crime, or is it balanced by the fact that, I mean, how, how is that working exactly? Is it balanced by the fact that those folks would, they were, were kind of dealing with the same, how do I say, 120 days, or, or whatever it is? I mean, what are your thoughts on that?
I, I can't say it's led to an uptick in crime. I do think a few times here and there, it's created situations that made individual prosecutors in my office uncomfortable, when someone had either DV crime, or, you know, a repeated OUI, DUI, something like that, where we asked for, you know, a bail that would protect the community, and the court, you know, went lower than we would like. But probably, there's also a lot of times when the court does give us the bail that we think is appropriate to protect the community. So I haven't seen a huge uptick in crime because of that, but there have been individual instances where we were uncomfortable with conditions that were set.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. I don't see any additional questions at this point, so if you want to go on to the second part of your presentation, go ahead.
So I was asked to just elaborate on my brainstorm, which is still just a brainstorm, so, you know, I'm kind of new to this business. Maybe it was foolhardy to go out on a limb and share a brainstorm, but I'll elaborate on it. So, if, I probably talked kind of fast last time. Basically, in Anchorage District Court, we have three alternative courts that are run by the court system. One is for mental health, people with mental health issues. One is people with addiction issues, called Wellness Court, and one is Veterans Court, which accesses programs provided by the VA. What, someone in my office was just brainstorming, who this issue is close to their heart, was, in essence, creating a homelessness court that is not run by the court system, but that we sort of, that we sort of create in-house, and the way we would do that, without asking the court system to come up with yet another, you know, court, is we have, you know, we have a fair number of defendants. you know, court, is we have, you know, we have a fair number of defendants who repeatedly commit relatively low-level public order type crimes, such as trespass and really low-level theft. And many of those are homeless people. And they repeatedly just rack up, you know, 40, 50 convictions, you know, over, you know, 15 years or something. So one option, one tool that we could use to sort of simulate an alternative court would be that we have a mechanism we use sometimes for, often for first offenders called a deferred sentencing agreement, where we basically make an offer that if the person enters a guilty plea, they will not be sentenced. Instead, they will have to do certain things, like a list of conditions, and stay out of trouble for six or 12 months. And if they complete all those conditions, then we come back to court and instead of being sentenced on their guilty plea, they can withdraw their guilty plea and we dismiss the case. So that would result in a full dismissal of a case and it would be pulled out of court view because we would be dismissing it. If they fail to meet those conditions, then, then they're convicted. And the sort of fail option, the sentence is built into that deferred sentencing agreement. So what someone in my office was brainstorming was that you could theoretically make deferred sentencing agreements for some of these folks who, who aren't first-time offenders necessarily, but whose history is primarily sort of trespass, theft, that kind of thing. And, but some of the conditions could be things like getting into, you know, complying with a program that houses people, that kind of thing. Or substance abuse monitoring or various things. And then if they comply with a program, and the program is basically getting into housing, you know, finding a job through an agency we can partner with, then their case would be dismissed. So that was sort of the brainstorm. That would involve a huge, basically, you would need someone dedicated to really just do that and to network with the homelessness folks here in the muni and the appropriate people at APD. Because you'd really want someone who actually got to know the community and to actually know individuals and to know all of, and to be conversant in all the programs available in the city, to hook people up with programs to do that. So that's the long version.
I have a question. Yeah, I have a question for you. Ms. Zalato?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. It's very interesting, Ms. Stanley. A couple of questions or considerations. During COVID, a lot of our social services resources are really stretched or delayed. So I would definitely be interested in how that might factor in into compliance with a deferred, deferred sentencing agreement? Did I say that correctly? Similarly, with housing, as we know, our numbers around homelessness have quite frankly skyrocketed and we just don't have enough units of housing, no matter how quickly we're trying to house someone. So those two considerations, I guess, are at top of mind for me. Also, to what extent individuals might be needing to seek employment? I know that's always been kind of one of those conditions we look at. But also whether or not they have a past history for Social Security disability benefits, where they may have lost their benefits and just really need to go through the application process, but that's often a year-plus process. So I love the idea of this innovation and really applaud the effort, just really want to think through all of the permutations for those folks who are most in need and what that really means, both in a pandemic and practically with services always being in short supply. Thanks.
Thanks. I have a couple more people in the queue. I have Dean Gates, apparently his mic's not working, so I'll ask his question for him. The question is, is there a cost and staffing needs estimate for the homeless court proposal for monitoring compliance with the conditions?
So basically, we would definitely take a whole attorney and maybe part of a secretary. Because really, that's, so for example, at the court system, for Wellness Court, for example, they have a whole staff of administrative, you know, an administrator and probation officers, you know, checking on everyone's compliance, checking in with people, making case plans, all that. I think we could start, you know, if this, you know, comes to reality, we could start it with one attorney, but it would have to be their full-time job because they would have to actually, yeah, check on all the compliance, they would have to monitor compliance, create all the offers and work with all the agencies, basically. So the cost estimate would be one attorney and maybe part of a secretary.
Thanks. Next, I have Ms. Allard.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Stanley. So my question is, I think the intent and the, how do I put this? Is well thought out and good intentions, but have you thought about the lawsuits that could come forward based on discrimination of certain people not having to be prosecuted to an extent that they should be or not versus somebody who may be not be homeless, but they're going to be prosecuted? Because this is, it could be considered a homeless and financial discrimination.
No, you're right. I had not thought about that. I think we would be, that's a good question. We do do this, so first of all, it's voluntary. We do do this for, you know, other classes of people. For example, we do this for people with mental health issues in Mental Health Court. And that has not been a civil liability for giving folks options to work programs. But obviously, that's something, if this came to reality, that is, you know, a valid concern and I would talk that over with civil.
Can I do a follow-up? Welcome.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Because my concern is if you get in, let's just pretend, the everyday soccer mom, I guess in Alaska, we can call it everyday ski mom, that does something repeatedly, but because she has a roof over her head and finances, that really concerns me. Because I would, I think there's other avenues we can help without discriminating against those who all commit the same crime but are treated differently based on their living situation.
No, I hear what you're saying. I think that we would start by narrowing it to certain, to certain types of crime, which would, which are more specific to that community than to your average ski mom.
Thanks. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question, I guess, is kind of to the committee as a whole. You know, this, this concept really does intrigue me. And I think if it helps us to really get some of these issues off the table that we know can be strung out, I mean, you know, Sarah mentioned that these are people with maybe 40 to 50 violations of something like trespass. And even though I think those are significant to the people who are being trespassed against, you know, it just seems to me that a lot of what the community would like to see are ways for people who are committing some of these low-level crimes to actually have a way to, so to speak, to kind of give back to the community. So if there's a way of, of kind of giving more things to do, having a list of things that, that people would be required to accomplish before any of the, the plea was withdrawn and the case dismissed, I think helps get some of these folks into a situation where they, they are at least trying to give back and to a certain extent, work off some of their, to work, to work through some of the things that they need to in order to maybe be a little more productive in society or, and certainly to get some of the help that they need. But anyway, I guess my question to the, to the committee is, is this something we want to pursue? And then get the appropriate people involved for more discussion. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Kennedy. And I can speak for myself. I'm intrigued as well and would be interested in, in learning more about it and having a further conversation. And we would love to hear from other members of the committee, their thoughts on it. Next in the queue, I have Ms. Zalato.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize, I had stepped away during the initial description of this. I want to be clear that I do not like the idea of a homelessness court. I like the idea of sentence agreement, deferments, for a variety of non-violent offenses, especially if there are repeat offenders, but specifically for homelessness. I know there's some, I have some qualms about even how the mental health court works, particularly requiring the guilty plea based on often a fact of something, you know, associated with a disability. So I do have some hesitation there. I do think the overall idea of deferred sentencing agreements are a great idea and a way to lift caseloads and really look at more holistic problem solving. But as to a, based on a particular status, that does give me pause, just based on some prior experience with the Wellness Court around mental health. So I just wanted to be clear on the record about how I really feel about it. Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just to clarify, it would not be a homelessness court through the court system. I was using that as a maybe somewhat awkward analogy for, for how we could, how we could sort of monitor deferred sentencing agreements in our, you know, in-house.
Great.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Peterson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Stanley, so my question is, is this the program that you're talking about, is this similar to what's called the Connecticut program or the Connecticut model? We, someone had mentioned that in one of our previous meetings, I don't know whether it was Public Safety or Homelessness Committee meeting, but they've got a similar program out in Connecticut, I believe.
And I'm afraid I'm not familiar with that. I can study up on it for next time or I can just email you, reach out to you after, you know, this week after the meeting.
Right, well, you know, if someone else has got a program that's working, there's no use recreating the wheel, so to speak. So, you know, if you check that out, maybe, maybe they perfected or almost perfected this or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I don't see anybody else in the queue at this point. Sarah, is anything else you want to share before, before we close out?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Before we move into audience participation, I just want to create space for any members. Is there any other items that we need to, any other questions, any other items, but before we move into our final item for the day? And just for clarification, some of you may have come a little bit late. The new business item on the U.S. Department of Justice briefing, we were not able to get that presentation lined up for this meeting and we are working on rescheduling that for a future meeting. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. And just as a reminder, you'll have three minutes and we'll just go first come, first served. I have a little timer here, so when your time is up, you'll, you'll hear a little ringer. And so whomever would like to start, if you could take yourself off of mute, you can go ahead and start your comment. Who would like to begin? And you will want to start with sharing your, your name, please.
Hi there, I'll begin. I'm Celeste Hodge-Groudon and I am the President and CEO of the Alaska Black Caucus. I actually hadn't prepared to share anything, but I just want to thank you for this opportunity to listen in. I plan on listening in, in the future, even the more. I do have some interest in these body cams and looking forward to conversation on that. And just want to make sure that we strive to keep equity in our mindset as we continue to resolve issues and concerns within our community. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Celeste. Great. Would anyone else like to, to testify?
Hello?
Yes, yes, please share, share your name and go ahead and start.
Yes, this is You Can Call Haberman, I'll start the timer now. My name is You Can Call Haberman. And just to note again, remind you, it's becoming more difficult to follow meetings when the information that's being presented is not part of, it's not presented and available to the public on that sub-website you got for your committee. You did have the agenda, yes, but you, but obviously you had presentations there. I don't know if they were visual for you in this case, because you do have visual presentations from time to time, but the public cannot connect. The committee on Economic Development shows a little bit more respect because they have connected and it's made available for the public to be connected to those presentations without going to a side website scenario. And then you address from time to time, very important issues, particularly dealing with the cameras that's coming up again. And when you have that kind of presentations and, and when you have reports from the fire department and the police department, you need to definitely have those presentations available. And if those principal department heads are giving presentations and they're only giving them verbally, because I'm not sure if they're written or not in this, in this situation, they should be in writing so the public can have, see that for the record and not something that's just given verbally and leaving a situation where someone has to go listen to a tape from time to time to say, what did the head of the police department say? And that's all I have to say except for one thing, you're going to have several meetings in the next couple of days, but mind you on the work you have, please make that information available so the public can follow. Thank you very much and I wish you all the best. And with 1 minute 11 seconds to spare.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman. Okay, would someone else like to testify?
Chair, this is Assemblymember Allard. I'm sorry to interrupt. There's people who want to testify. I don't know if they know how to chime in or unmute themselves.
Okay. Well, we can create a little bit of space for them to be able to do that. Is it star six, is that, is that correct in terms of how you unmute?
That's correct. If you're on the phone, you can hit star six to unmute yourself.
Well, we've got a little bit of time here, so...
Hello, this is Roland Caviad. Am I speaking to the group?
Yes, you sure are. Yep, you sure are. You go, go, start, I'll, I'll start your timer, you'll have three, three minutes. And if you could share your name for us one more time, please.
Okay. My name is Roland Caviad. I had some questions, just of a clarification. Number one, are these sessions recorded so we can go back and listen by any chance? And if so, is there a link to those? And then I would like to also talk about the attorney against Stanley that was speaking, those homelessness people that had been in jail for a period of time, how long are they there and are, and since they're repeated offenders, how long do they stay there? Number two, and had anybody ever thought about putting monitors on some of those homelessness to monitor their whereabouts? Not that you could keep track of them all the time, because they, they have a propensity of repeat trespassing and repeat misdemeanor or major crimes at that time. But I do want to say, thank you for letting me be able to talk and speak. I'm finished with my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, just for your information, these are recorded and there are links on the municipal website. And then you should, should be able to access them there. Okay, who would like to speak next? If you, if you would like to unmute yourself using star six and just share your name and you'll have three minutes. Would anyone else like to test? Would anyone else like to testify at this point? Just as a reminder, you hit star six to unmute. Ms. Allard, are you aware of others beyond the person that just testified that are that are waiting?
No, he's the only one that texted me.
Okay, great, great. All right, well, seeing no other questions in the queue and hearing no one else unmuting and wanting to testify, I will adjourn this meeting at 11:51. Thank you all and enjoy the rest of your day. Bye.
Thanks, Cameron. Bye.